Call this meeting to order. And by way of information, you know that we've been working on integration, on using Board Docs slowly and it's become way better than our old method of sending around a 200-page PDF. We appreciate all of the board members and the staff's effort to help us be more efficient, more efficient with our meetings. So, if I understand correctly, we're going to try to run this meeting a little bit more through Board Docs than we've done in the past. And so, board members, if you'd like to log into Board Docs and join the meeting, select on our meeting tonight and say, "Join the meeting." Just so, we're not going to vote on anything today, obviously, but eventually we have that capability, that's what we want to do. Does that make sense?
Well, somehow I'm not also keeping on.
Are you in Chinatown? It might take a minute. Just take a look here, just in case we need to access.
Oh, it's failing, yay!
Thank you, sir.
Why is that working?
Does anyone need to get their password reset?
No, I just can't get on the network. That's a brand new problem. You think I should just automatically get it, because I have been in the past.
Hang on, so.
Oh, okay. So I can get my password.
You got that. I stole it.
It's mine.
Yeah, if we're going to do this electronically, we're going to have to have something like it. It's a good suggestion.
This just happened, too. It took us a while until it up.
Dr. Means? Okay, so we have that. Would you help us with the roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Ellis?
Here.
Mr. Bybee?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Knox?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Thank you. And we have our agenda in front of us. Any changes to the agenda? Fantastic. We received a number of information items. The first is Head Start, early Head Start Policy Council Report. Dr. Means, any new information or anything to add to what's been provided to us?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board on this item?
No.
I will on the agenda items.
Excuse me?
I will on the agenda items.
The next item we have is a SPOSS report. We received November 2018 SPOSS report. Any additional information on that item, Dr. Means?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board on the SPOSS report? We also received a report from the Athens Community Career Academy, some minutes, and the CEO report. Any additions to that? Item, Dr. Means?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
While we're on that, I would just like to recognize CJ Anderson, who's with us tonight, serves on the Career Academy Board. Are you the only rep?
Yeah, I'm the rep for November.
Okay. Well, we're glad to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And thank you for all of our guests being here today. Thank you very much. And Parent Advisory Board, there's no report attached. Is there a report to be had from Better Tonight?
What we talked about before, that the board member was not attending?
Right, they're going to, we were supposed to be setting up a time for both of us to meet together jointly, so I don't know, should that be a part of this? I meant to ask about that earlier. Should that be a part of this?
Could be something that we've discussed, maybe taken off in the future.
I think we said that last.
I think we need to get things from the advisory board. I think we also discussed that minutes from that organization would then be used in this space moving forward. So I think those are the two things that we need to do.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Do you think we could have some minutes from that organization to put in here for now?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a good suggestion.
Yep.
Thank you.
So that becomes like an action item out of our work?
I think it will just be an information item that we see in our.
Action item, Mr. Bybee.
For session.
We didn't parse that out last night.
I'll look at that.
Thank you, Ms. Bybee. We also, moving on to Section D, the minutes of previous meetings, we received minutes from October 4th, meeting October 4th, 2018. Any questions or comments on those meetings?
I did not see any corrections. Did anyone else?
We also received minutes from our regular meeting, October 11th, 2018. Any changes or questions regarding those minutes? Good.
Very nice.
From here, it looks like you're all playing solitary.
It wasn't an efficient meeting. Oh, really? Shh!
Okay.
Tell me.
Mr. Bybee, I don't believe minutes have been submitted for October 4th. That would be the work session of October.
There's the presentation.
There's the presentation, but not minutes. My understanding that Ms. Vatika and I are still waiting on some responses to questions the board presented to one of the presenters last month. And so, once those responses are submitted, then we'll give them out to you for October 4th. But I think you have their presentation. You have their presentation.
That's correct. Yep, thank you for that correction. When should we expect, though, any anticipated space?
Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
They'll just be loaded to Board Docs and we can just read them.
You'll be notified when they're loaded.
Thank you. Moving on then to Section E, policy. We have a number of policies, regulations, and things to be posted for public review of meetings. The first one is, sir, do you want to, do you want to write these, not write these, or just have to go to?
Just go through them.
So we, first one is policy ICKA, religious beliefs, to the new policy. Any questions around, we have, ready to be posted?
And just, I don't think we had a lot of people at our policy committee meeting, which is fine, but public people, but just to reiterate what we said at that policy committee meeting, this is the first policy of this kind in the state of Georgia, I believe. Is that correct?
It's my knowledge.
And so, we're pretty proud to be ahead in that way and to build cultural awareness for our students and to recognize the differences among all of our students and provide the appropriate space for our students of all faiths.
Fantastic.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Who can we tell so that we can get some accolades for that? I'm on the stairs, is it GSA or?
Please, in here. Well, it's not passed, but, and it came, you know, to, it came about after a conversa, after multiple conversations, and one was from a person who felt like her faith was not fully identified in our policies, and she was right. So we felt very good that we were able to provide the space. The other thing it allows for is students who may miss a day of school to worship in their way, but that doesn't preclude their ability to attend their sports that night, you know, as there gets some prelude to the same for. Anyway, I just thought it was, it's just a really good policy.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your work on that. We also have policy BBFA, local school governance teams, is a new policy.
This one is to replace the policy on.
Local school councils.
Local school councils. We rescinded quite some time ago, but we just needed to put a policy in place that instead of local school councils, we have local school governance teams. It doesn't override or supersede the charter or the work of the LSGT. It is simply a policy that states that we have an LSGT and kind of gives a broad overview of the LSGT, but doesn't override anything that's already there. There's incorrect error.
Yes. I was just going to ask, so I can't attend the policy meetings because it covers the class I teach. So did, in this policy, did we just take the former wording of the councils and just replace it with LSGTs?
No, it's not a direct replacement.
Okay.
Because they don't do the same job.
Okay, so, so this was wordsmithed to be consistent with the charter, is that what you're saying?
It was wordsmithed to represent the work of the LSGT in line with the charter, but our local policy doesn't override our charter ever. It's just a, it's just basically an awareness policy that there's an LSGT that's part of our school governance team, part of our.
Part of the way we do business, right?
Part of the way we do business, yeah.
And John, I thought it would go into a little bit more depth, but I think we can't do that until we have all the meetings that we need to have with the LSGTs and now with their boards. So I felt like there's still some more to be done, not in the policy necessarily.
Yes, great.
Yeah, I, what I wish I had been cognizant, aware of, and should have said, I mean, it seemed like the confusion, as Sarah was alluding to in the community, is that last paragraph because it, because it homes in, I mean, it makes a general statement as to local school governance teams, but then it singles out part of what the contract says, and these emphasizes that this is really, supports really the meaning. So I'm just questioning the wisdom of that last paragraph.
Are there other parts of the contract you think should go there that are not there?
I wouldn't have to look at it. I mean, I need a review of the LSGT contract, I'll be honest with you. I feel very ill-prepared, and I don't feel like I understand what the LSGT teams are doing. And I think what Linda was saying in terms of us hearing more from them would give us a sense of what exactly is their jurisdiction as they see it, based on their understanding of the contract.
And I was really talking about our planned review of the contract with the LSGTs because we had a question about, were we actually enforcing it as it was written? And so, we haven't had that yet. I think that's scheduled for one of our future board meetings. I saw this policy is kind of that, you know, 5,000, 5,000 foot view.
It's exactly what it is.
It simply says it exists. It doesn't take us into how it operates, how we operate.
Actually, I think the last paragraph does.
I think it says the primary decision, the primary role of the LSGTs, and the LSGT members that I've spoken to said that that is their primary role, that is what they're primarily there to do. A critical model of the school growth plan being the big.
I was just responding to what Linda said, which she said this just says it exists, but that last paragraph is beyond existence.
But that's how it was created, under that last paragraph.
I'm actually not certain that leaving that last paragraph and makes or breaks this policy in any way, shape, or form. And so, if it's just as clear to the public to delete that last paragraph, the rest of it does maintain the 5,000-foot view.
Madam Chair, the policy committee, Mr. Bybee, may I suggest maybe some tweaking of the language?
Sure.
Could you say something to the effect of, the authority of local school governance teams shall be in alignment with Appendix B of the Charter System Contract? So then, you're not identifying certain components, but you're identifying everything that's within Appendix B of the Charter System Contract, which outlines where LSGTs are able to provide input?
Yep.
And so, I think that this language was trying to identify was, and what can LSGTs decide? What is theirs to own and decide? But if you change the language that way, then now we're not.
We're not pulling out.
We're not pulling certain things out, and you're in alignment with what the contract says.
I like that language change.
I do, too.
That's great.
Did we get it? We write it down? The primary decision-making authority of local school governance teams shall.
Yeah, the authority, the authority of local school governance teams shall be in alignment with Appendix B of the Charter System Contract.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Got it.
And I think that, I think that accurately reflects our conversation, that accurately reflects our intention, that actually reflects our, you know, excitement and support for the LSGTs and the good work that they're doing, and reflects it in a way that is harder to misinterpret.
Yes, it's clear, I mean, the role of policy is to be clear, so.
What's what?
To provide clarity.
What's what we're saying, what we're not saying.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Any other questions about this policy?
Which number is that?
This is.
That was BBFA, which is the second one on our list.
Right.
Okay.
I'm in.
Hearing, up to the media. Hearing the other comments, and we go on to policy GBAB, pay for performance.
That's just a rescission of a policy that we don't adhere to, that we don't do.
Okay. Any questions or comments around that policy? Hearing none. The next one is GBE, professional personal assignment.
Personal personnel.
Personnel assignment.
If memory serves me, I didn't bring my notes, this is just a review. Yeah, so this is last time, it's just time to be reviewed.
Okay.
Clarify some language.
I don't think anything was changed.
Any questions on that? The next one is the GBL, professional personnel tenure.
And this is just to provide clarity, just to update some of the language. If it hasn't been reviewed, my understanding is that, if I remember, serves that there's not any substantive changes here, it was just language and.
Let's look at the references.
Yeah, there's incorrect references.
Yeah, goes back to our policy on.
Yeah, GBN, fair dismissal.
Perfect. Any questions around that? The next one is GBO, professional personnel resignation.
There were some changes. There are some changes.
Any questions or comments to this one? I think I have some questions. Does this include, yeah, okay, this is the one that includes the abandonment of contracts. Okay, and so, were any changes made to how we do the policies, to situations with abandonment of contracts? I don't.
I recall the main discussion point on this was giving the superintendent the authority to accept on behalf of the board resignation.
And to, it was, help me with my words, everybody, but it was, if somebody resigns, say, due to like, to go care for another family member or something like that, and they have to move, it used to be that they weren't released from their contract in Clark County until the board voted, but this gave the superintendent the authority to approve that release so that they could go ahead and get a new job in there, so that they didn't have a lot of delay. And that's for, that's for situations that are, you know, if somebody needs to abandon their contract and time sensitive and due to irrational reasons.
I thought that was really good. I had no idea that people couldn't actually resign until we say so.
Until you, until the Board of Education acts on the resignation.
But this gave, this gave them the ability to, and we could, and then we vote on it later, but they can go ahead and secure another job in their new location, so they don't have to wait that.
So the superintendent releases them from their contract to pursue others?
Correct.
Okay.
It doesn't stipulate additions, it just says.
Right.
Anything.
And.
I mean, the superintendent can accept anything, anytime.
And so, it's, the wording was struck where it says, if the board does not release the employee, or that was struck, so now it's if the employee is not released from the contract. So that was struck so that the superintendent has the power as well.
Yes.
So it's not just the board, but now with the wording, the superintendent decides if there's release from the contract.
Correct.
I think it talks about superintendent. Yeah, the superintendent is authorized to accept on behalf of the Board of Education designations, or not, right? And that's, this would be the situation if that's not, if release is not accepted, is not granted.
We didn't talk about that, so, but I think the reality is, though, so what's the impact of not accepting it?
And.
Well, no, what's the impact on the employee?
Sounds like they'd have a difficult time.
They don't have, they don't have the opportunity to go and sign a new contract with anybody else. So as long as it takes us to sign that contract, this person is unable to re, be re-employed.
There's an opportunity, so I'll call the board to handle any specific situations.
It's kind of like getting us together for this one that we're trying to do next week.
Right, I just wanted to ask, is this a sample?
Yeah.
And this is, this is not the case right now. Case right now in this.
These are out of public comment, they have not been accepted by the board.
That's right.
That's right.
They're actually not even out for public comment, yeah.
This is the virtual next week.
So next week, yeah.
So this is the change that you're calling?
That's right.
Good conversation. Any other questions, comments around GBO? Okay, the next policy we have is GBRB, professional personnel time schedules. Few minor changes. Any questions or comments?
This was really just removing certified and classifieds since we don't really refer to our employees and that, but that.
Great. Good.
Correct.
The regulation around professional personnel time schedules.
That's just, present, what do they call it? Resended. Resended.
Next, we have GBV.
Also rescinded.
Also rescinded. Any questions on that one? And we have JR, switch records. Any questions on that one?
Remember, I don't think there's any.
These states.
Sorry.
JR.
The legislature.
That's right. Yeah, this was about adding in the video records, too, to bring it up to today's climate, I guess, about having video, to add it in about the ability to.
This is relevant to the previous conversation that we had almost a year ago, exactly, around the Safe School Resolution we passed. Some of the recommendations from that ad hoc group are relevant to this policy, so that's And then we have JR-R1, which is the regulation for student records.
No changes there.
No changes, okay. Any questions? And policy BFBc, board community engagement policy.
There's also some misinterpretation in the community on this one that caught my eye today, about five minutes before I walked in. And this is, this policy, I believe, is very well crafted and is intended to provide the ability to engage with all kinds of stakeholder groups in an appropriate way, still maintaining the fourth and verbal. And if you haven't been at the policy committee meetings, to have heard the conversation behind this, I would welcome you to please talk to a policy committee member who has attended those meetings, or a board member who has, before making a rash assumption about what this language is intended to do.
And I think the use case here, we do, we attend lots of meetings, we represent the Board of Education in lots of meetings that aren't committees of the Board of Education, and we have a, we have a list of some of them here. And the fact that we do, we attend some meetings and other meetings of other organizations is relatively arbitrary. We need to decide kind of what we go to, what we don't go to. This is, I think what this is trying to do is put in place a way for us to be, us to represent the Board of Education in a particular meeting, so when we are invited to wear our Board of Education hat and represent the Board of Education. How we go about doing that, and that is, you know, outlined here. Make sure everyone's on the same page about that.
It's also providing the ability to, if you attend something and you're not wearing your Board of Education hat, and how, but you're attending, but you end up engaging in somewhat of a board conversation, and just how to handle that. It's to bring, you know, we've had these conversations for years, I mean, eight years in, and we've never really been able to figure out, is my hat on or is my hat off? And am I allowed to go to that, or am I not allowed to go to that? And how am I supposed to act when I'm there? And am I allowed to talk or not talk? And all that. And I think that this really provides good clarity and for the ability to attend any meeting you want to, and just be cognizant of how you're attending it as an individual or as a board member, and if you're there as a board member, what the kind of parameters around that are, because we are individual board members and cannot speak for our whole.
But that's always true, Ronnie.
Let's talk to any concerns, yes.
So, in terms of how this would operation wise, so it says, "Any request to meet with a representative of the board or the foreboard will be placed on the next available agenda and will be voted on by the board at a business meeting with approval by majority vote." So that's any request, so that includes PTOs, for example? I think, I think that the intent, and the key word for me is that representative, right? So when they, they're saying, "John, we want you to come." Yep. And speak for the Board of Education in our meeting, then yes, that should be emailed to the board, we vote on it.
But if you, if you attend a PTO meeting as John Knox, John Knox, the community member, then it falls into C.
And then all of a sudden, the conversation says, "Hey, there's John, let's get his input because he's on school board." Then it's sort of more of a C situation.
Where you would, you know, you just say, "I'm here as just an individual, I'm not speaking on, you know, I'm not here on official board business." And then you just kind of send, that's only if you get engaged in board conversation. And then you just send an email back to the rest of your board members that just says, "I attended the Whit Davis PTO meeting last night and engaged in these conversations, and here's some concern that they have." Just to elevate the conversation so that we all know what, what's happening all across the district and not, so that it, so that one member isn't, one board member isn't engaged only and solely and knowledgeable about one issue on one side of town or with one special interest group, or it's just to help elevate that conversation.
I guess the crux of my confusion is, in all the board training that I've gone through, it's been hammered time and again that we are, we have no power as individuals. Zero. Zero power as individuals. So if one. Zero power as individuals. So if one goes to a meeting, if one is invited by a PTO to be a representative of the Board, how is that different from being an individual? Because that person has no power, is speaking as, as, time and again, you know, speaking only as an individual. So I'm just not getting the distinction at all between.
Well, it's similar to like you attending Foundation for Excellence, right, on behalf of the Board. You're not there as a position of power, you're there as a role, as a liaison, and as a, you know, to, to liaise those two groups. Same thing with the Parent Advisory Board, when a Board member goes, these are all things that we've already voted on, so those are good examples on here. Examples are, but not limited to, Parent Advisory Board, Foundation for Excellence, Career Academy, Carol attends those meetings often, and that's great, and she should, um, but it just kind of, and the Charter System Advisory Board. So, um, you're not, she's not, you're not attending the Career Academy meeting to be powerful, or to, to use your Board role to facilitate anything. You're attending it just to liaise the community and to understand what's going on there. Exactly. You're just attending. Yeah, which is an open meeting, and you're totally welcome and allowed to do it. We could also vote to put an official Board member on that, like we have done with Foundation for Excellence. Um, and so it just, it just starts off as a.
I can see where there is confusion on stakeholder and then going to various meetings, because it would more or less formalize the stakeholder. And also this policy contains in item D, that any stakeholder, all stakeholder engagement meetings should be attended by their proper district personnel, so there's no exception to that, if you're representing, if one of our designated stakeholder meetings, and I mean, C just kind of, money's that water a little bit, and maybe is, should be in a different position. For continuity, D should probably be above C, going, not take that concentration.
I think, I think the reason they have D there at the end is, is designating Board stuff and administrative stuff, it's a clear way to do that.
Okay, here, here's, I went back after our last policy meeting, and there were, there was a, there were two situations that had this policy being in place, I don't believe I would have gained, yeah, I would not have had the time to go over the Board. Um, one was the first welcoming of immigrant students, uh, program. They had the library, Dr. Means was a, um, you know, one of the keynote speakers, and I was asked to be, as a Board member, part of the panel. I look back in terms of when our meeting was, and when the invitation was, and I would not have had time to, we would not have had a meeting, um, prior to that event. And so that would have denied me that opportunity to, um, I think, highlight what Clark County school system does to be, be a welcoming, um, school. I also, uh, look back and, and an invitation I received from Federation of Neighborhoods took place, um, literally two weeks, and would not have given me enough time to, to, to speak also on, on education. In both those situations, I made it very clear that I was speaking as an individual, but yet I wasn't there because, I'm Greg Davis, I was there because I'm on the Board. So how would those two situations have played in if this policy had been adopted, adapted?
Let me give you one more scenario, because I've been at meetings when I was there as the Davis community member, and somebody didn't show up, and I was asked to sit on a panel. And so I gave my disclaimer and joined the panel. Again, I explained that I'm not speaking for the Board, but if you just want my opinion, I'll be happy to share that.
That's C one. And then the, the next step.
But would you speak for the Board?
Never. I can't.
So, so then it was, it was a non-issue, because you would never speak for the Board?
But this may have been a group that the Board might have been concerned that I was participating with, I don't know that.
But John, you speak for the Board, as you should, you're delegated to at Foundation for Excellence, and so that's when that, when it applies that you would be there as a Board member.
When I'm on the Board of Envision Athens as an official Board member on a rotation thing, right, but again, I don't speak for the Board, I'm there to get the information and bring it back to the Board.
Right, I mean, she could not say, okay, we will throw in another five thousand dollars for Envision Athens.
That's not speaking for the Board.
So, yeah, so in other words, she, she's there as an individual, but she, in that case, she's there as an official representative on the part of the Board.
Which we also voted in on.
But these other situations where we are not there designated by the Board to, to participate in these stakeholder meetings, that's the, that's the problem, is, you know.
Well, and I, you know, I mean, there may be, um, I think there's a lot of positive, a lot of positive attributes that comes about in this policy that, I mean, and I guess it's just going to come to weighing the positive versus maybe a, a couple of downsides to it. But I think the, the positive attributes to it are that it informs the Board of all, you know, any and all conversations throughout the public that we end up kind of getting sucked into at different places. It inform, it keeps Board members really understanding when they're at different meetings, and, and kind of how that looks, and how you're, how you, and how you, um, should represent yourself and the Board and the community. Um, we've, we've had probably thirty conversations plus, 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 since I've been on this Board about this exact thing, and people not, and people being confused about when they were clear and weren't clear, about where they were allowed to be and where they weren't allowed to be. And so while I think that there may be a couple of times that this doesn't exactly puzzle piece in the way that we need it to, or want it to, um, I think it does provide some really good guidance for both the Board and the community to understand our role as individuals and as a whole. Um, again, policies can always be modified, um, and.
And I think, John, I think, I, I think you're right. If, if, reality is, with this policy, without this policy, this policy doesn't change the power that we have as individual Board members. And so, and so we.
Well, it sounds like what it does change is it, it kind of brings in the Board to make sure that we know where Board members are speaking, and what groups they're talking to. So it's, it's more a check on Board members than, than anybody.
A little bit, just to avoid, Board, is there a problem? Yeah, is there a problem?
I just gave two examples, and no one's addressed it.
I did, just, I just addressed it all. I just said, there might be some downsides to this, but let's talk about the positives. I don't, I don't know how to address that. I don't know, I don't know anything about what you're talking about. I wasn't part of any of those conversations, I don't know. Um, but there, so that's definitely a potential downside for it, and so then I off, I said, and they just need to offset the downsides with the plus sides, and I offered what I see as positive.
And I can imagine, quite honestly, I can imagine a scenario where, I, I don't, none of the people that currently sit on the Board, or are elected to come on the Board, but I can imagine a future point where there are significant issues in education, um, that we are relatively aligned about, but there may be somebody who, that, that gets on the Board that is aligned in a very, or oriented in a very different direction. And if these, that person is off meeting as a representative of our Board with organizations who are, who's, who's, who I feel their interests run contrary to the benefit of the Clark County School District, we can't stop them, but I'd like to know about it, right? I'd like to know about, um, I'd like to have a good sense of, um, of where we all are. So that's sort of the catastrophic, the worst case scenario, that I don't anticipate with our existing Board, but, but I can imagine, there's a scenario out there where when, um, and we need to think policies for the good governance of the Clark County School District, um, long term.
Is that transparent, some policies?
Yeah, why don't we just have a policy that says, let our fellow Board members know where we're going?
We've done that.
Thank you for coming to our Board meeting. Would you please, uh, let us have our Board meeting? Thank you. Uh, if you have some language proposed, that would be fantastic.
I, I will.
This is going to be out for, what, thirty days?
This is, this will be discussed again next week, and, um, and then out for thirty days, that's right. Any other questions or comments on this particular policy?
No, we've talked about this a lot, so good. I think we, we came to another place today, I'm grateful.
And I think we're, I, I think there's, there's, uh, there are places where, again, where reasonable people committed to the, the education of children in the Clark County School District can have differing opinions, and I think if we, if we approach these things with, with, with that in mind, I think we end up in a much better position than, um, than anything else. So I, I appreciate your engagement about this.
So is there any objection to this going forward to next week?
I do.
You want to send it back to committee?
I, I'll propose some alternative language, just so I know.
And we can.
So, um, I guess we need to talk about.
Well, and, and in our, in our, you know, obviously the, ideally, we, we talked about the alternative language here in our work session, so if we can get that to review by the Board, um, better, so that we can decide.
I'll, I'll do what I can. We have a lot of meetings. But I, I think it's just important to be able to balance the needs of the Board, to know where the Board members are, which is, I think what we talked about is kind of an intent here. With the, the need for the public to interact, I, I think that, uh, we've spent a lot of time in my, almost two years on the Board, talking about how to make sure that the Board doesn't interact in certain ways with the public, but I think that, that's the, that's the glass half empty. I like, I like to look at the positive aspects of the interactions of elected, uh, officials, as we are, with the public. I think that there can be good things that come out of that.
But I think that, I think what you just said hit, hit real, hit a nail on the head with me too, and it is a glass half empty to be looking at this policy as, this is an opportunity to silence the Board, or whatever. I mean, that's some of the narrative. And that is a glass half empty approach, I'm looking at it, when really the glass half full approach is, this is a way for the Board to interact with the community in a very appropriate way, um, and to continue to do good business with the Board. And so if we didn't strike the right wording on it, then, um, fine, you know, that's no problem. But the intent of the policy is the glass half full side of that conversation. It is not a silence or pause, right? And so I think that there has been some incorrect, it's a, it's a, it's a policy for, for, um, appropriate engagement. So if we didn't strike the balance of the right language, and I'm fine with that, but I just want to be clear that the conversation surrounding this in committee and, and was, and was about how to be appropriately engaged in a positive way.
I think you're right. I mean, I think, John, I think you, what you did is, are, you know, you articulated well what I sense is the unanimous intent of, of, of folks on the Board, uh, that we want to strike that right balance between how to be, uh, good stewards of the Board and good Board membership with each other, and also engage with the, with the public. You know, I, I read this as nothing other than an attempt to try to strike that balance, and if you have some language that, oh, I'll attempt to strike the balance, because it's not there for me yet.
Sure, just listen. Sounds good. Any other questions?
I just think after that, that it would be good to get the public into a, to a, to a better stance, because it is not clear, and cannot be operationalized that good way that we can do it.
Sure, absolutely. It needs to be a, a clear policy that is, that is unambiguous.
I'm looking forward to those wording changes that were come, got us in this, because you've given a few attempts, and so it'd be good.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John. If you want to dictate it to me, I'll be happy to transcribe.
Ah, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? Then, under E's one, we have a few policies that have been, um, out for, for review.
We have no public comment.
No public comment on any of these policies. Okay. And we have, um, we have policy GAE, Complaints Agreements, Complaints Agreements, and. Any questions or comments around that one? This is where the, we are on policies.
Yeah, you just lost me, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Do we want to go through each one of them? There are, we've already done, you know what I mean? These have already been out for thirty days, and we've not received any public comments.
Good point, yeah.
I'm not trying to affect them, I just want to.
So there's no public comment?
No, there's no change, or it's changed in titles, they've changed in the design.
Then let me just read through them quickly and, and see if we have any comments. It's policy GAE, Complaints Agreements, policy GBI, Professional Personnel Evaluation, Regulation GVR one, Professional Personnel Evaluation, policy GVRIG, Without Repeating the Law, Exhibit GVRIGE one, and Exhibit GVRIGE two, Policy GVRJ, Link for Substitutes, Policy GCN, Classified Personnel Separation, Policy GBU, Professional Personnel Ethics. Concerns around voting for these next week? Okay. Um, next up on our agenda is item F, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis requested an update on our equity training for staff. To date, we have had over one hundred and twenty-five staff members trained, um, in our equity work. Um, our equity work is really centered around four different cornerstones. The first is taking a look at the historic impact of inequity in our nation, and in particular in K-12 educational settings. The second is ensuring that there is alignment between the service that we, we, the school system provides to students, and how we construct that work. And what that means is that, and we have a lot of conversations through our equity, uh, training, is that typically, uh, kids have to go to the adults, um, in a school. So if you are a student who is struggling academically the way that schools are traditionally structured, you have to leave your classroom with a student, and go to where the teacher or teachers who support struggling students, for example, is located. The equity model says that the students shouldn't have to move. Why don't the adults go to where the students are? Why don't, why aren't we setting up schools that way? Uh, and so the terminology that's used is that educators and schools should co-plan together to co-serve children. And so it's not about, here are teachers who just work with certain groups of kids versus others. Um, so we talk a lot about, about, about that, that level of service. The third cornerstone is transforming teaching and learning, ensuring that there is, um, rigorous, equitable education that's happening for every child, and that is, we're not identifying students in tracks, or I, or saying that these are students who are, who are workforce bound, therefore we're going to provide a different curriculum for that student, but it's ensuring that we are teaching in a way where every child has access to, to rec. And then the final component is, uh, cornerstone four, which is centered around the work you do, uh, as a Board, but when you're talking about things at a building level, it's also focusing on the, the, the school principal and their school improvement leadership team, to make sure that, uh, funding for the school and certain, uh, classroom procedures and school policies are equitable. So those are the four components of the training. Um, though, we have a second cohort being trained right now. Once that is completed, we have teacher teams who are then, is a train to trainer model. They're going back to their faculties and they're delivering this information to their, their colleagues. Then the rest of the second semester will be used for schools to develop their own equity plans. And just like, uh, our school growth plans, which are, if you go off to a school website right now, you'll see the school growth plan for each individual school, if you go to their webpage. Once these equity plans are completed, they will be uploaded for, for the public. equity plans are completed, they will be uploaded for the public to see as well. That's the update I have from today.
Okay. What I, Dr. Means, one question I've got is, um... You know, and maybe it's too early to tell, but you know, when we first began talking about equity, there was a lot of misunderstanding, I think, in terms of the community. And there was a lot of defensiveness from the board of the community. And so, and, you know, it was my sense that some of it was coming from the staff. So I'm particularly interested in what types of questions staff has about this policy that has percolated up and has needed to be addressed by you or by other staff members.
Hey, you asked about training, not policy.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Right. So I gave you a review of the training that we've...
The training was based on equity policy, or it wasn't?
No, sir.
The training is similar to the one that we received from Futura and Capper.
Yes.
Okay. And have you, and how has it been received, as far as you're understanding?
Received well. It is stretching people to think about how we deliver education. So the can't co-plan, the co-serv motto is a very, so it's a different way of looking at how you teach children. There's an activity during the training that asks staff members to visually draw out how many different programs we create for students. So we have EIP teachers, we have special ed teachers, we have all these different teachers who specialize and work with children. And there are many times where those specialized staff members never talk with the classroom teacher who works with that student on a daily basis for the majority of the day. And so that activity shows how a classroom of twenty-three students, how there's different lines going out of the classroom where the child has to leave the classroom, but the adults stay where they are. So it's stretching people, but it's a good stretch. It's been, conversations are, we're starting to have conversations about things such as, why are only five percent of the entire gifted population children of African-American descent? But the school system has a student population that is forty-nine percent white. So how did we, how did we arrive at this point? Those are the conversations that are starting to happen now. So to answer your question, sir, it's been, it's at times, these are tough conversations for people. Or to ask the question, why are the majority of children who are suspended children of color? What was happening? And so that cornerstone that I talked to you about earlier in regards to leveraging funding and policy, when you start talking about this at the school level, what practices, what rules do we have in place that are, that are creating a space where children of color are continuously being disciplined? Is there something that we can do as adults that can change this? Those are the conversations that are starting to occur. And at times, though they're uncomfortable for people, but we believe they're necessary in this district. When you look at the data, it's clear that we need to re-image how we are serving all of our children.
Has it impacted practice to some degree already?
It's starting to. It's starting to, for sure, yes.
And I think some of these, you know, I've heard some of these conversations happening in, you know, much less rigorous, much less organized ways before, but this sort of seems like it lends some structure and some system to the conversation where we say we are all going to engage in this conversation, not just, you know, in pockets.
And it leads up to a school equity plan, where the school, and it's from the staff, the faculty and the staff at each school says, so here are the issues that we need to work on as a faculty. It's not, that's their work, and it's their examination of their practices and their data for their services.
Let me ask, you talked about these are train-to-trainer type exercises, but then these people being trained will then take it to their schools and on down. How was this current cohort gathered? Was it people who volunteered, or people who were selected some other way?
The building principal had the option of selecting who they wanted trained. In some cases, they're members of the school improvement leadership team. In other cases, it was, it was individuals who the building principal feels, feels that have been on the front end of advocating for children on, from an equity standpoint. I've had at least one principal say, and I asked some classroom teachers to be part of this team because I know that they're struggling. That individual teacher's struggling with the concept. So I want them to actually be part of the discussion on the front end and be part of the team that's going to lead the development of a school-based equity plan. So there's, we left it up to the principal.
Is it, is it, are there ongoing, is there ongoing committee structure, or is there an ongoing, I mean, how do you maintain the momentum once the staff is trained?
That equity, that equity plan puts it right in front of everyone, and it's something that you have to live by then. But that comes through a lot of conversation and a lot of discussion at the school level about their kids. The model of a district equity committee coming together and creating a plan for the district, that doesn't work. It has to be from the staff addressing their kids and their school communities. So that's how we are, that's how this work is being approached.
Have you heard any talk at that school level, the principals or the representatives on these trainings about ways they might engage their local school governance teams in this work, or in the plan, or anything like that?
The trainers tell them that this shouldn't be separate work, that whatever equity issues you see in your data should also be part of your school growth plan, which, going back to our conversation about policy, is ultimately approved by a local school governance team. I don't know on the spectrum of building principals who has the vision of ensuring that those conversations are happening with their L S G Ts, but they are, they are counseled by the facilitators to make sure that there is overlap between the work of equity and making sure that it's embedded in your school growth plan. And so you can go off to some of the schools now and see what their school growth plan goals are. You'll see, some goals are very specific around equity issues, and some school growth plans are not.
But now, did I hear somewhere that the school improvement plan, is it the same as the growth plan?
Yes, ma'am.
That the L S G Ts are kind of the keepers of that, or they're way in on that, or they're using that as one of their guiding tools to help them guide their work in the school?
According to Appendix B of the charter system, a local school governance team is supposed to sign off and approve a school growth plan.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
So that's not our point. It's not the district's plan. That's each local school governance team. They, the building principal, and we were very explicit with our building principals to say, go to your L S G Ts and make sure that they are signing off on your, and approving your plan.
Now, I'm obviously confused on something, because you had said, is there, what's the relationship between the policy that we worked on, the equity policy, and the process that you're talking about? They're just too separate?
They're very separate. So the policy that you're speaking to, I believe, is within educational philosophy, and I can't remember the title of the policy right now. But that is very separate from equity training, in which that was the foundation of your question to me.
Yeah, no, I thought, yeah, I thought, I thought that the equity policy set the foundation for the...
Those four cornerstones that I shared with you.
Is it, is it safe to say that, you know, we adopted equity policy that sort of said where the school board, our beliefs around what this means for our kids in our school district? And the way I've been thinking about it is this, this training is an enactment, right, part of the enactment of this, of that philosophy, right? Not, it's not called for or anything, but there's that policy that we adopted is going to be enacted in all sorts of ways.
Right. That was my, that was my impression. So I thought the two were related. It sounds like it's different.
Fair to say?
I mean, anytime you have a board policy that addresses equity, I mean, there will be elements of it that you have to discuss during training, because that's the foundation that this Board of Education said is important to you. But the cornerstones of the equity approach are focus on equity. And there's a lot of discussion about the historic marginalization of certain groups of students, just not students of color, but women in certain academic subjects. I mean, they're, so we get into public schools in America who are not constructed to serve all children fairly. So we have that conversation. That's difficult. That's why it's going to be cornerstone one. The second is, so how are we aligning staff to serving all students well? Are we setting things up in a way where you're not, you don't have to, as a student, go away if there isn't services for you within a school? Shouldn't the services be pushed into the school versus the child having to lead? So we have those conversations. The third cornerstone is how do you transform instruction to be equitable and to meet the needs of all students? And the fourth is looking at your funding and school practices. So the last, the last one is very important. If a school implements, not suggesting this is happening in Clark County, but I've seen schools across the country where they'll say, you have to be silent during lunch. You can't talk. Well, if you are, if you have a group of students who are talking during lunch, and they, you see the data trend shows that it's students of color primarily, and then that leads up eventually to those students being disciplined over and over again, so then that's really more of an issue on the adults in the school, not the children, because as educators, it clearly shows that they're going to talk. So there, so there's one of two things you can do. You can either say, you can't talk, and that's our line, and you better not cross it. Or you adjust to meet the needs of children. Why? Just an opinion of one, but talking during lunch is not something that should lead to a pathway that's going to impede a child's educational process. Those are the types of conversations that are...
And I think, I mean, the superintendent and other policies, the superintendent and his staff are charged with the enactment and the operationalization of all of our policies. And so I guess, you know, all of our policies, a lot of them are going to be operationalized in a variety of ways. And I think what we're hearing about, and what we get, we get lots of reports about are how those are operationalized. And I think that's a great report on how, on how that's happening.
One thing that we talked about, and I don't know, you know, is whether or not, you know, we need regulations. I know the movement away in policy is going away from regulations, but if we needed any regulations along with equity policy, you know. And that's what, that's kind of like where my mind was at in terms of, you know, are there extra things that we need to put into play that reinforce, you know, what Dr. Means just laid out?
This one is taking me to that place where I don't, what is it, that rule often, you can't legislate, you can't put rules around certain things, certain behaviors, I guess. So equity is a behavior thing, too, in addition to it being causal for a lot of the problems that we're seeing. And I just, I wouldn't even begin to know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I can't even fathom crafting a document like that. I don't know how to make you love me.
And if it, and if it does, I mean, I think, hopefully, Dr. Means and staff are loud and clear that if, if, if something, if they need the board to codify something in policy, that that will trickle up through the directionals and we can talk about it and codify it in the way that you're talking about. And I would expect that they hear the support from the board and whatever, whatever they need from the board to make this happen.
Mr. President, I think the process that we're currently using is actually more powerful than having regulations, because each school is looking at their own conditions and creating their own plan based on their children and their school communities. You don't want to create a regulation around a policy of equity that's coming from the top down from the district. You should want it to be a situation where you're asking teacher leaders at each school to grapple with their issues and then develop a plan to fix it. It's actually a stronger model.
I really like it.
That's a great point.
I also don't...
Bottom up, is it the way to do it?
I also don't think it's, you know, it would be, it's our, our role as board to craft policy, and it's the role of the staff and the superintendent to implement that policy. If we start regulating the implementation of policy, then we just lost it.
All right.
Any other questions, comments?
Who's doing the training?
Dr. Elise Futura and Dr. Colleen Capper. You've met both individuals twice because they have trained the board.
Two times last school year.
Really enjoyed that training, actually. Learned a lot. It was very eye-opening.
Thank you.
I thought it was very good, too. Very non-threatening. Very attuned to all of us, and I thought that was excellent.
Yeah, I agree very much. I have one more question, Dr. Means. You said one hundred and twenty-five people have attended, and you said that the principals selected the people. Is it pretty evenly spread over elementary, middle, high? Is it evenly spread throughout each school?
We would prefer to have more staff members at the high school train, because those faculties are larger. But we, it's just difficult with substitutes to get the right proportion of teachers representing the high schools. But generally speaking, we're, we've been very pleased with the distribution.
Great. Any other questions? Anything else with the superintendent's report?
No, sir.
All right. We have, moving on then to section G of our agenda. We have a total of five field trips, sir, that were requested approval for. Thank you. Five field trips here. Any questions around these field trips? Consent? Okay, thank you. Others to the consent agenda. Next item is approved district Avid path training.
Last year, we were required, for eighteen schools that chose to become Avid schools, to send staff members to what Avid calls Summer Institute. We were, we were required to send staff members. And those, that Summer Institute is a professional development conference that, that Avid puts on in year two, and then subsequent years, we can run our own local training, where we don't have to send staff members to other locations, but we can have the Avid staff, professionals, and developers come to Athens and provide the training. It greatly reduces the cost for us. The average cost for sending staff members to the Summer Institute was thirteen hundred dollars. By running what we call a path, you can run it for about four hundred and eighty-five dollars. So it greatly reduces the cost. It also allows more staff members to participate. Because of family schedules and other things, it's difficult for people to pick up and go to a conference. By holding it here, it allows us to get more... By holding it here, it, it allows us to, to get more staff members involved. And I guess the last thing I would share with you is that we would, we would try to plan this to happen right after the end of the school year so it doesn't go deep into the summer. The Summer Institute, they typically happen in June and July, which is right in the, the middle of people's summer vacation. So for all those reasons, it's less expensive, but more importantly, it's more convenient for staff. We're making the recommendation to, to allow us to run our own path training locally.
Any questions?
So overall, it reduces the cost. The ask is for $97,000 and that comes from carryovers, you said?
It'll come from title dollars. Right now, we've identified, we may have enough in carryover from this calendar year, sir, to pay for it, but it will be from title funds, just like it was from title funds this past year for Summer Institute.
Yeah, but we'll be able to, that was $260,000 or something.
It's greatly reduced. That's good.
And this isn't directly, just going to Abbott. When, when should we expect to, to hear some feedback? And, you know, I think a lot of folks excited to see we're about, you know, one semester in now, pushing one semester in now to Abbott at some level. Should we love to start to hear back what teachers think, how they're liking, what's...
So there's one metric in the, we have one metric in the strategic plan that addresses Abbott, but the Abbott District Coordinator, Ms. Joy Anderson, is working with a committee of teachers and principals to develop additional metrics that we will use to, to study and evaluate the effectiveness of Abbott on the front end. So that, those, those metrics will be, will be finalized. I, I, the committee hasn't come together yet, but Ms. Anderson would like to finalize those by, by February of this calendar year so that we know what we're studying going into the end of this year. We believe that a, I guess a good example, I was just with Dr. Dunn this week, and she indicated that the dual-language emergent program is a six-year implementation plan, six years. So I, I would, I would believe that from a best practice standpoint, there should be at least a, a five-year runway to evaluate the effectiveness of something to the magnitude of Abbott at 18 schools. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't have annual updates and evaluations and metrics. And so we'll have all of those components on the front end by January emergent 2019.
Great. I have to be patient.
Who will be, let me ask this, Dr. Means, I apologize if you did. Who will be leading? I know it's a Clark, is it Clark County employee-led or the, the institute, the summer training here in Clark County, or will it be Abbott people coming in or how is that?
The trainers who typically provide the training at Summer Institute will come to Abbott versus us. Well, it's kind of very similar to our, our conversation around equity. So instead of us having to go to Abbott, they'll come to us. In some cases, there may be classroom teachers and principals who have implemented so well that Abbott would want them to be professional developers.
And the teachers that attend are selected from the principals?
By the principals.
Any other questions around path training?
Just to go back, so, so in terms of evaluation, you're thinking of that as a multi-year kind of thing?
But we'll provide annual, annual update so you can, you can see the trend, if, if things going well or not. I think it's unhealthy. I think frankly, I think that's how we arrived at the situation with IB. There wasn't very clear metrics on the implementation side when it was first in place and then subsequently, as a board, you didn't receive annual updates on how IB was working or not working. So we believe we need to approach work differently. So we'll provide the board and the community annual updates on how things are going based on the metrics that will be developed by Ms. Anderson and her community.
Great. Is this something we'd like to include in our consent agenda?
Consent.
I'm agreement, is that okay? All right. The next item is an approval of retention upon maintenance contracts.
I want to sound like someone.
Is that all the, all the ponds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Mitch is Cleveland Road for say, and that's why?
Yes, sir.
So are we going to do something, can we have a contest to make them more artistic and more ergonomic or?
Our engineer.
The one right back over here was really...
Our engineer in back of you, Ms. Davis, said no.
Stop it, stop it.
But I don't, you know, the one at Clark Central is, is almost like a park. I mean, it's almost like a, what do they call it? Yeah, kind of like a nature.
That's a fire retention. It's the detention ponds that contain the water have to be mowed and maintained so they can maintain the capacity of the overflow in case of a heavy rain. Fire retention ponds are different. They filter water from the parking lots essentially.
But they can't be playgrounds, okay? I was thinking like a prom, like English.
Is this something that we can include our consent agenda?
I'm sick of that. We can go. Consent.
Okay, thank you. We have approved 2019 legislative agenda.
Yeah, first off, I want to, I want to compliment Claire for, for her excellent guidance with this. And I'm, I'm going to pull it off the consent agenda only because there is a little bit of wording that, that dealing with TRS that said Claire and I talked about. So it's, I don't know exactly what the wording, but it's just to, it will be, it will go in number four where it says promote teacher retention, recruitment and retention. We'll put something like increase teacher salaries, support the teacher retirement, retirement system as currently established. Just something like that. That's something that GAE is very concerned about based on what they, they're hearing from the legislature or the Capitol. So we just want to come out strong. So anyway, I'm pulling it off the consent, but just for that one compliment.
That'd be great. It'd be nice to be able to articulate it to the public.
Right. Oh, and the other thing I want to point out too is that, you know, we are talking about having a, having a town forum in which board members who are interested can, can meet with the public and begin, we're talking as early as December or, you know, as late as early January, but so that we can begin to engage the community more than we have in the past with, you know, what the priorities of the school district have, have been established with the legislature. So I think it will give us a good opportunity to get feedback back and forth and at the same time encourage people to maintain their civic engagement with their elected officials.
You're talking about a town hall, a forum, the government relations committee.
Right. But other board members too. I mean, it's, you know, we just, we just want to involve and engage in this dialogue over, you know, what, what would help students in Clark County School District that relate directly to what the legislature may possibly be interested in doing or not doing the next season, next session.
The guidance is coming from?
Well, the guidance would be coming from our legislative agenda that we vote on. Okay, that, that will be the cornerstone.
And so if there is any change to this language, when do you anticipate that comment out of the board, mention this week at some point in advance?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I, we'll get that out in advance. It's only about maybe five or six words that we're going to be adding.
So I attended a, and I don't know if this has anything to do with this or whatever I'm talking, but I believe that QBE was fully funded in Georgia. Is that right? And, and so since I've been on the board, that's been the prime heat, right? And so now that it is, what does it mean?
Well, what, what it, what it means is that they are no longer taking from a formula that was established in 1985.
So is the priority now to tie QBE to COLA or something? Because is that a part of our agenda?
Right. Some type of...
So that's not it, and that's the big dollar, right?
No, it is, it's, it's taking QBE to the one that is fully funded, it's totally funded, it's QBE.
So it's public school. Okay, okay, I'm here. I missed it.
Yeah, and I think there's two parts to look at it. I mean, the way that this is put on the agenda is that we have the, kind of the down and dirty part, but then we have the rationale, which is...
Is it factional?
Huh?
Anybody supporting it, anybody? Who was championing that?
Well, we haven't supported it. We haven't voted it ourselves, yeah.
We'll start here.
It's not just us, though. I mean, this is a statewide issue.
Well, no, it is coming from us. I mean, not, most school districts, I mean, some of the bigger ones out of Atlanta are much more legislatively attuned, but if you start going to rural counties around Georgia, they're not, you know, that's, they're not focused on, on the, they're just kind of like, they're not receiving in, they don't really try to engage their, their legislators the way that, with that, with that we've started doing the last three or four years.
Okay.
So, two things. The numbering is off, number, Roman numeral seven should be six of the agenda. And, and the other thing I just wanted to say, just an FYI because we're here, is that one thing that came up in the government relations meeting is going to be sent over to policy in terms of teacher evaluations. So that's just a heads up for policy.
Okay, thank you. And then, will there be copies of this, paper copies for the, for the public?
Yes, yes. If we could, Dr. Means, that would be part. Well, I mean, we're going to make a little tweet, but I guess it's ready, yeah.
But can that go out, the agenda for next Tuesday and not separately?
Say that again.
If he's going to make any changes, can they put those in a packet for next week and not have a separate thing? If you're making tweaks, I mean...
Can we put them right in board docs?
Yes, that'd be great.
Not do any separately, but incorporate the changes you're talking about in board docs.
The handout is the one with rationale or just six priorities, whatever, but...
Yeah, it would, it would fit, it would six priorities, it's that number.
I don't know.
That'd be great. Six priorities. That'd be nice. Great. So we'll take that off of the consent agenda list. Next item for consideration is approval of a partnership with the University of Virginia Partnership for Leaders in Education.
Board members, this proposal is coming from a perspective of we have schools that are underperforming. Unfortunately, we received news yesterday that one of our schools has been identified on an eligibility list for the chief turnaround officer to, to select that school if he wanted to. In the communication from the district, I wanted to make very clear that that one school isn't our only concern. We had one school that is within one point of being on the list and there are a few others that are within five points of being on the list. Now, that eligibility list should also, it should be, should be noted that the cutoff to be on the eligibility list was a 55.3 CCRPI score. Gaines Elementary School had a 55.3 CCRPI score. So it was the 104th school on a list of 104 schools. And it should be noted that the CCRPI has changed multiple times in this state and so we're comparing apples to oranges in many cases. But the, the need to address the underperformance of not only Gaines but other chronically underperforming schools is, is clear. And so we are aware that the University of Virginia has a very unique, strong program where they work with their College of Education and their business school to help schools improve their performance. And that's what the University, University of Virginia Partnership for Leaders in Education is about. It's been proven from an evidence-based standpoint to be one of only two programs in the country that, that, that shows results. And we believe, and that's under, that's under that every student secedes that portion of federal law. The feds have identified this program as being one of the best programs in the country that can actually help schools perform better. And so we are presenting this partnership to you because we, we believe that it can help us, you know, our, our, not only the, the schools that we believe would be a good fit for the partnership, but we, we believe that the practices that we'll learn from our colleagues at the University of Virginia would benefit all of our schools. Last thing I would say before you ask any questions or if you have any questions is that it's always a little unique to offer and present a proposal from a university that is not part of UGA here in Athens. But you should know that our, our partners and our colleagues at the University of Georgia College of Education, they don't have any objections to us working with UVA. In fact, they would like to be partnered with us. And so as a part of our professional development school district model, I received an email today from the leadership of the College of Ed that said, "Just know, we, we, we want to work with you and we want to work with our colleagues at UVA." So I think that's, that was very, I wanted to share that with you as a, as a board and the community, that this is not a territorial thing. This is truly educators saying, "We know that this program works and we know we have schools and kids who need it."
So is that, would that imply people coming down and working with our schools or...
Well, and I want to make, we actually have a guess. If you have additional questions, I may not do justice to, to the program. But Ms. Wilson is here with us this, this evening. She's here based in Georgia. There are, there are coaches from, there are coaches from the, the state of Georgia who work with UVA that would be part of, of this, this partnership. So I guess what I'm sharing with you is that, yes, there may be people who come from Charlottesville to, to come work with us, but there's also professionals who are, who live in Georgia, who work in Georgia, who would work with us here in Clark County.
To answer your question, sir, it's a combination. So there would be opportunities for leaders to go to the University of Virginia because that's where our executive MBA professors are at the Dart Business School. But then we also embed supports where we come here to the district. So we'll work with the schools and mainly with district leaderships. Our partner is, our partnership is really more about the district and how the district creates the right conditions for schools to be successful. So we learn from the schools, but we really help work on the systems and the conditions at the district level.
So it's not really working with the teachers on the school, though?
It does not work with the teachers. We work from the school leadership team up through senior leadership in the district. So we do a lot of, we ask the district to prioritize a set of schools. We don't pick those schools, you select the schools. We prioritize those schools because that helps us learn what are the necessary conditions that you would need to establish in Clark County to best serve your students. So we don't come in with the answer. We have lots of tools, we have lots of resources, but we will help you find your own brilliance in attacking some of your most challenging problems and then helping you make sure that you're creating conditions for that to happen.
So, so at what level do you work, sir? Is it the principal level in time?
Yes, but we do engage school-based leadership teams. So there will be times when we're here that we will work with the school-based leadership team, which includes some of your teacher leaders, your assistant principals, any other coaches or things that you might have in your school. We also offer some opportunities for them to get some of the executive education as well.
Would that include, and I don't want you to be able to answer this, for the LSGT teams that have certain schools or...
That's your governance councils in your schools. So we don't work directly... So we don't work directly with them, but we will work with how we can engage them because obviously we're going to ask schools to think about, as you talk about their school improvement plans, their equity plans, we have what we call a 90-day action plan, just really kind of encompassing the leadership actions that are happening, and we would work with them and how they engage their council in that work. So it would not, they would not be excluded from the work, but we don't work directly in building their capacity.
So, I was just gonna ask, do we know metrics for success, right? So are these things that you know now, how we're gonna measure whether this has been worth the effort or not, or will we develop the process? How does that work?
To me, ultimately, our metric is student achievement, right? Ultimately, we're all going for, for all of our kids to do better, but we will work with you to determine what are the metrics that you want to measure over time. We have a research base of the metrics that we've looked at around leadership effectiveness, student outcomes, culture and climate. We base our work in four levers, which are leadership, talent development, instructional infrastructure, and support capability. So we do metrics around those. We have rubrics and various things that we use, but we'll certainly work with you if there are specific metrics that you're interested in tracking.
So is this a, is this a year-long, three-year, six-month?
It's a three-year partnership. If you were to partner with you now, we would consider this what we call our design year, which is where we would work around a lot of the infrastructure to make sure you're set up. We would actually launch this summer with your leaders. So they would start implementing next school year and then the following school year. So we're not designed to be a lifetime partner. We're designed to help systems create their own system so that it's sustainable beyond people. We do offer some sustainability programs in the, in the future if that's something you're interested in, which is a three-year partnership.
You've visited schools before, relevant in the schools, I read that, right?
We came and did a district readiness assessment. So did not visit schools, but spoke with school leaders. So there was public interviews and focus groups that occurred as part of that readiness assessment.
And so you mentioned opportunities to go to Charlottesville. Is that like, for example, principals going there for additional training?
Yes, so for example, in the spring, we do what we call a boot camp, and that would be your district leader. So oftentimes, your, your district would select who they sent to that. In this particular contract that we're proposing, I think we're looking at a four to five members of your district team. So oftentimes, district will choose their person who is over talent, oftentimes they'll choose their person who's over learning and teaching or curriculum and instruction, and that would be up to you. And then in the summer, we do a six-day program where each principal from the schools that are selected in the partnership would come, as well as that district team. In the winter program, that's when school-based leadership teams would come. It's a team of four from each school, as well as the district leadership team again. And so those members can change or can stay the same, that's up to your district to decide how you're gonna best leverage this opportunity.
How long are they there?
Depends on the program. So for boot camp, it's three and a half days, for summer program, it's six days. Summer one is our most intensive program, which is a full six days. Then we come to you in between. We also will provide tailored support, so if there's a particular area that you want to address, we have a network of experts, and we will come to your district and help provide additional tailored supports. Winter program is a three-day program. We have a spring retreat, which is a day program, and then we're coming in between.
So, so this is not actually the contract, this is just what-
We're seeking approval from the board to engage in a contract with-
So in, and then that would be brought back to the board, or, or, I'm just, there's no cost in this, and that's why.
Right.
So that you don't pay until 2020, but it doesn't say what the cost will be.
Right. We'll get the final contract too, but there is, there is a cost. There is a cost.
Three installments of a-
Yes.
And how much is there a ballpark for you?
I think over the three years is $350.
And it's kind of Title I?
It's Title I.
Title I.
And it would, it would cover, it would cover four schools over the course of three years. So you take it, when you step back, think about that dollar amount, and imagine it being spread over four schools over three years, that, that's the amount that you're talking about.
So if we can remove that from consent, we don't have the financial component in there, but I appreciate the work that the district has done to seek a partnership with a research-driven institution. Our, our schools that need the most support need some more support.
That's a good, I mean, this is exciting, so it's, it's worth discussing.
Yeah.
You might, you might, it's up there.
I think it's important to know, I mean, like, we've been talking about this, I think it's been the focus of the community, a little bit about one of our schools being placed on that eligibility list. So the chief act, the chief turnaround officer, turnaround officer, is someone who is grounded in the work from the UVA turnaround program. So the chief turnaround officer for the state of Georgia, his work in regards to whatever he does, whenever he selects a school, is grounded and is based in this work because he used to work for the UVA partnership with leaders in education. And so what I would share with the community and the board is that I believe it would behoove us to strongly consider this program if we want to ensure that the chief turnaround officer doesn't want to identify a school in Clark County. If the turnaround officer decides eventually they want to pick a school in a colony or school district, it's just not that one school that's on the eligibility list. Turnaround officer could say, well, I see a pattern of schools. And so since there's a pattern, there's a feeder program for a certain school, I, I think I need to work with all of those schools. So that, that is a, that's a, that's a, that's a potential, that's, that's a possibility. In the, the law that governs the turnaround officer, after three years, if there isn't strong performance from the school, there's a number of different things the turnaround officer can do, ranging from letting staff go, to letting the principal go, to, there's a, there's a lot of authority given to the turnaround officer. The first three years, there's more, they call it interventions, they call it, you get consulting. So it's the same, I guess I would just share with you, it's the same model that is being presented here, I think is really, and when we presented this, we didn't, we didn't, it's unfortunate that we have a school on the list, but we didn't, we didn't anticipate that we would have a school on the list. But now knowing that we do have a school on the list, there, I, I just, I would just share with you, I believe that this puts us in a position where we can demonstrate that we are being proactive, and we're trying to address this internally and locally, and that we don't need support from the state to help us identify how we can turn around our, our schools. We can do that internally. So I, it's just, you know, it's, when I read the law again, you know, there's nothing preventing the turnaround officer to say, well, you know, since Gaines feeds into Hillsman Middle School, I think I want to work with Hillsman Middle School too. And, oh, and since Hillsman feeds into Cedar, or Cedar Shoals, I want to work with Cedar Shoals as well. There's nothing preventing that from happening. I, I, now I think the, the turnaround officer has a lot of work on his proverbial play, but just, I, I just want to share with the board and more, more so for the community, there's a lot of, it's a lot of opportunity for the officer, turnaround officer, to dig in and start poking at components of our local operation if we are not more proactive. I know if I were a community member or a board member, I would be asking the question, so have you, have schools been identified? That was my question. And no, I, I think there are schools that are a natural fit based on their trend of performance in, in the past few years, but no, nothing official. And I, I've shared with officials at UVA, I would, I believe strongly in this, the schools have to decide if they want to do it. So a school, community, a building principal, in this case, would have to identify themselves. Typically with this type of model, in some school systems, they would, UVA would come in and do an evaluation, and they would talk with the building principal to determine if that person's the right fit, and then give counsel to the district to say, either we don't think this person can do the work, or we think they can. I've shared with UVA, I don't want to remove anyone from a principalship. I believe that through strong, intensive training, whatever principals identify themselves as wanting to be part of this process, they can, they can grow professionally. So this is not an issue of moving people, this is not, this will be voluntary based on, on, on what the, the principals in the school want.
Now, it sounds like Dr. Means, based on her explanation, maybe I just misunderstood, but there's a lot of focus on the, on the central office leadership as well, which means that it could spill over into other schools, but is, is it, is it like 50/50, or, or how, I just-
I would defer to Ms. Wilson on that.
So I'll give you an example, if I may. I'm gonna, I'll build on your earlier conversation, you were having your conversation about equity. And the conversation was that each of those schools would devise their own equity plan, right? And that the schools need to own that. In an example like that, we might start to ask district leaders how they're providing supports and accountabilities to schools around those equity plans. So if you're empowering schools to come up with their plan, how are we as a district then, being an accountability partner around what they said they wanted to do, but also what are the supports that we're providing in order for them to be able to do that? You could build up a similar example with exclusionary practices, right? What, what are the systems that we have in the district that support schools in being able to have inclusive practices? So we, we learn from the schools that are in the partnership. So if we have four schools, we leverage those four schools to learn how we can work with district personnel on how we can strengthen conditions for schools to be successful. So it's not really a, I can't really give a split of a percentage, but to your point earlier, I think one of the, the added benefits, I mean, if you want to talk about dollars, I think it extends beyond four schools, because I think, I, I worked in a, a large public school system, just retired out of one 32 years, and realized that we don't get up in the morning and intentionally create conditions that make it difficult for schools to be successful, but we often do. And so what we'll do is help you embolden your, your own district leadership perspective about your transformation process, really help strengthen your curriculum and assessments, and then have you rethink about how you are addressing support and accountability within this process. So it's not really an even split, but we are about the systems and the conditions, and we believe that, and we know from our research base that when we get that right, schools are more successful.
And so the, the cost figure that's, so that goes to primarily to working with the leadership teams, principals, central office, to create conditions that will then work for students.
Right, so we learn in those, say, in this example, those four schools.
So it's up, you know, it's kind of up here, but it helps the below.
Goes back to kind of your bottom-up philosophy, and it also helps you then, as a district, decide what is our theory of action, and what are the kind of tiered supports that we might want to provide as a district to more equitably serve schools? So that if you do have a school that gets to X high-performance level or X under-performance level, then you've built out systems and have a theory of action for how you respond to those situations.
Let me clarify on what I thought I heard, and I'm not sure. This will be bottom up with the, the type of supports necessary at the district level to ensure success happens.
So we'll, we'll identify the challenges. So schools are the best equipped to identify the challenges that are keeping them from being able to move students forward. We do have a research base around 12 conditions we think are necessary at a district level. So it's not just a free-for-all, like schools identify this, we do have a research base around those conditions that we think districts have to establish. But there's a lot of room for innovation and dance space about how you get there.
How do you have that, those conditions on your website?
I'm not sure if each of those are publicly posted, but we can certainly get those.
I'm just saying, you know, curious to know if that communication was thing, what prohibits systems and figuring that out is school system? I mean, I have a question. What do you see you'd be, what there's would-
Well, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's leadership. I mean, what we see across the nation, right, is-
I know, but that's what the security is doing across the nation, and what is preventing-
We're cage, we're oftentimes cages of our own design, right? We've created systems and policies and structures and have not evolved, I think, sometimes with the learners of kids. So oftentimes, we don't see leadership like we're seeing here tonight with your board and with your superintendent, who are willing to be proactive and to do whatever it takes to serve the best interest of all kids in their district. That's evident here tonight in hearing you talk about equity and hearing you talk about the need for these proactive things. It's not having effective talent management structures to hire leaders who are equipped with the competencies or to develop the leaders and the competencies that are necessary to do the work. It's around instructional infrastructure, it's around our four levers. I think it's a much deeper conversation than kind of a work session Q and A, but we would be happy to provide you with whatever, Dr. Means can let us know whatever additional information you want, we'd be happy to provide that or to come back.
Where can you live?
I live in Conyers. I'm a University of Georgia alumni, did my student teaching at Clark Central and Cedar Shoals High School.
He wrote, that's another story.
Alts Road, Gaines Elementary, I did practicums there, so I would be honored to, to be able to come back and work in Athens.
Awesome. You should have lived with that.
Yeah.
I'm so glad you asked.
I was a participant in the, in my former school district. I was a participant in the University of Virginia program for three cohorts, and just really believe in the purpose and the mission of the work and have seen firsthand some of the results, and so I elected to go to work with them. So that's why I live here, but work with the University of Virginia.
So let me ask this to Dr. Means, so the, the schools that identify themselves as wanting to be part of this, how do their, how does this mesh with their individual school growth plans, the work that she's talking about and the school growth plans, the LSGTs will be, we'll sign off on or approve?
So the growth plans have already been presented to the local school governance team and already signed off on. I think we, we have, prior to even presenting this to you this evening, we've put a lot of pieces in place already. So we've been proactive by having a two-year school growth plan in place or talking about equity plans. But now there's a foundation for the UVA team to work with these principals, to say, so how are you enacting your, your, your school growth plan? How are you measuring it and making sure that that work is, is being done well? We're exposing ourselves too as a, as a district team because the UVA team, I expect them to, to push us and to say, so, I'll just come up with a scenario, i- if, if school A is saying that they need more social workers, yet you're not providing social workers to the school, why aren't you? If you say that you're supposed to be there to support the school and that's what they've identified, why aren't you putting systems and structures in place that, to make that work happen? So I think it's going to push all of us to, to refine what we do and how we do it. It is a, it's a moment, I believe, where we can actually become a better school system. Now, Ms. Wilson referenced that there was, she, in our former school system, there were three different cohorts, because what happens typically is that once building principals see the support that they're getting from this program, they, the others who are not receiving this support will say, so why aren't we eligible for being a part of this program? And that typically, what, what principals see is that their, their, their colleagues are being- what, what principals see is that their, their colleagues are being developed and being, there, there's an investment in, in their, their, their leadership.
I also appreciate in the email that went out, both to public and to the board, that the statement was in the email about Gaines, that said, let me be clear, you know, this is not about a failure on the part of the teachers and the administration. This is a system. We have to make shifts in our system to support our kids. And I know that this partnership wasn't, was already, you know, in, in discussions prior to Gaines being on that list, but I do appreciate the district addressing it at the district level instead of starting with the teachers and the administration on, on the push for change.
Teachers don't fail. Principals don't fail, but systems fail. And, and so we're not, and when you see the, the variance in our, in our school system, I mean, there's variance. I mean, there's some schools that are performing very well, and there are some schools that are not. And even with the schools that are performing well, when you really dig into their data, they may be performing well in the aggregate, but, or excuse me, they're, they're performing well overall, but when you drill down and disaggregate the data, they're not. I, I believe all of those things speak to our, our system and how we support all of our schools. And so that's the driving force behind, behind this recommendation. We'll get a contract to you as soon as possible. Hopefully tomorrow, and you'll, you'll see, you'll see the figures firsthand. But we, we tried to address many of the issues. It was, it's good to have someone who can state that, that would be a partner with us. It's, it was important to us, and I'm pleased to say that our, our colleagues at UGA are, they want to work within this, this partnership, so.
I appreciated that information as well, because that was one thing that came to my mind. UGA have, you know, been a good partner with us for quite some time, and so I'm glad to know that this isn't impacting, this isn't one or the other.
I'm really encouraged that they want to do this, because I think it will improve the quality of the work that we get from them. And I think it's just opening up another avenue. I've heard a lot of feedback from people who don't really know, don't have it, especially if they're in our schools for the first time. And so to actually offer them tools that are going to be supportive to them and allow them to be supported, be successful, I think that's what I'm doing is just absolutely amazing to them. Happy about that.
The last thing I would say, and I think Ms. Wilson, thank you. I think the term, I think the term turnaround is perturbative. It's just a negative term. It's just, so I struggle with even saying it at times, but I like the word that Ms. Wilson used, and that's how we're viewing this. We want to transform. We want to transform into something different than what we currently are. Okay? So that's, that's the law behind this recommendation.
I don't know what name we're going to use when we try to ask for volunteers, but it can be turnaround.
No.
We got to come up with something really creative over there.
Okay, so I, the contract, will that just be a month's term, or is it itemized?
It's typically a month's term.
How would you like it itemized?
I was just interested in, because we've heard a variety of things in terms of what the activities will be. I'm just trying to figure out how the resources map onto the different activities.
I can make a request to try to itemize it as much as possible.
You're welcome. Okay, and then, there's nothing else. Moving on to G, number six, approved intent to apply for early head start expansion grants. Any questions, concerns on that?
How many?
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
How many do we have already, and how many are we trying to add?
We currently have 64 center-based seats for early head start students and 100 home-based seats for early head start students, for a total of 364 seats. The 102 head start seats, like 364 seats for our head start grant altogether. This would increase our early head start seats, which is a 0 to 2-year-old, going up to 3. It would not increase our degrees that the head start grant. The last time we had an opportunity to apply for these funds was approximately two years ago, when they opened that expansion opportunity. And so for us, this would allow us to increase our center-based seating and to build capacity for our early head start services, which we know we have a great need for in our county, but don't have enough seats to serve all students that might be eligible. I mean, it is an income-eligible-based program and would continue to be.
So is this a very competitive grant?
It is. There's about $140 million across the United States. They expect to offer approximately 60 grants across the United States for an approximate, you know, 1.5 million, Desmond, $8 million ceiling, 750,000 floor, but approximate grant estimate that they're guessing will be around 1.5 million per. And it'll give us the opportunity to look at how we best lay that out in our county.
I hope we get it.
Well, this is just for us to complete pursuit, complete the application and pursuit.
If we can put that on our...
I appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you for your work. Okay, that's it. Um, I think that's just for, yeah, for next week. Uh, we have nothing under H. Other agenda items? Personnel recommendations?
Well, before we leave other agenda items, I want us to lose sight of the wonderful work that was done with the voting this week from Jesse. But Jesse was all over Facebook with the high school students at Cedar Shoals, who made it over to do vote, early voting, and also Stefan Smith at Clark Central, who also took her high school, so really voted. Yesterday.
We also had a...
Oh, no, today we could vote for Clark Central.
We also had a lot, there was a lot of community support through the county commissioners and UGA board members.
Fantastic.
So flagpole is covered there, and I think Jesse left these for us if anybody wants to pick up one. The whole story is...
Great. Uh, thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, we have I, personal recommendations. We have those in our, in our packet.
Not yet.
Yeah, they're in here.
Oh, they're in there, in there. I'm sorry.
Just going to review those. We'll, you know, go on those, I think. Anything else? Hearing nothing else. He was, uh... No. Just go. This means adjourned.